I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:02. We're a couple of minutes late because we came from one meeting to the next. With that, if we could all please stand to pledge allegiance in a moment of sense. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Get this party started. Okay. Proclamations and presentations, we have none tonight. Public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you would like to speak and you are on a device, you can go to the participants tab and raise your blue hand. If you are on the phone, you can push star nine. When I call on you, please state your name and address for the record and you have two minutes. Does anybody have anything they would like to start us off with tonight? I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. That gets us to public hearing items. We have none. Reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Brenda, do you have anything?
Tourism did not meet sustainable CT. There was a meeting today. There's no update. And I did share with the town council some equity training dates that were happening every Friday afternoon for the month of August via email. I was not able to attend the ones yet because I didn't have power or internet. Hopefully, some other people were able to take advantage of it. They should be sharing the presentation, just the slides, not the entire training online at some point. But there was four different types of equity training. There will be equity training again offered in February, and when those dates are released, I will share them also.
If you get the slides, Brenda, can you share the one that was Friday because I wasn't able to attend it either?
Yeah.
No power. So, all right. That gets us that look at we're moving right along like the Muppets tonight, moving right along. Reports of town council liaisons. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Brenda. See, I tricked you earlier and I started on the other side.
That's okay.
Three for Lou.
Yeah, Blake Minnie did not meet, land acquisition has not had a meeting, and planning and zoning, unfortunately, their Monday night meeting had to be canceled because there were still some issues with internet and power. There were a couple of public hearings that were scheduled for that meeting so that we've, I believe was Heidi felt the best thing to do was to postpone them until the next regularly scheduled meeting. So.
Okay, Steve?
All right, so I believe since we last met, there was a special meeting of the Board of Education in regards to, I think there was some straw poll votes I admittedly missed. Think about the first half of the meeting due to power-related issues. So I don't have the entirety of the minutes and I don't think they've been approved yet by the Board of Education. So I defer to those once they're published. But a lot of it was surrounding the discussion of scheduling and the school calendar as well as the online versus in-person education, which is going to be a topic for tomorrow. The Conservation Commission has canceled their first meeting of the month due to conflicting schedules. However, I believe Mike has appointed, I'll leave it for his manager's message, but there were interviews held previous in the prior weeks between myself, Jim Hutton, the Conservation Chair, and Mike Rosen for five candidates to fill three spots. So I believe they will be appointed and sworn in at the August 26 meeting. Otherwise, the Conservation Commission just wants to make sure people, as they're going on trails now after the storm, make sure that they report to the town any downed trees. The Corps and the Commission are aware of any damage and can do those repairs.
Steve, it's Mike. I just want to let you know it's August 27th, the meeting, and yes, the three members were appointed.
Okay, 27th. Thank you for the clarification.
Perfect. Anything else?
Nope, I am all set.
John? You're on mute. Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. WTC did not, so I have nothing to report today.
Okay, Cassandra?
I had no meetings.
Okay, Kurt?
All right, so the agricultural commission did not meet since the last time we've spoken, but I was able to text attend the person rep meeting. One of the first in-person meetings we had a very long time was over at Crandall Pavilion. It was great. Big thing was Mike was there and he had a little presentation regarding Steve Grant, which we'll be discussing later tonight. And they gave their approval or endorsement for my proposal. And they also officially canceled Tallinn Day through a formal vote. So that was the main thing. And that was all I had. So thanks.
Okay. EDC was canceled. Board of Ed has had multiple meetings. They have been having multiple meetings a week between the track meetings, which is the Tallinn reopening committee meeting, and then their regular meetings. So in the track meeting last night, Dr. Willett decided on the hybrid plan, which is going to be presented to the Board of Ed tomorrow, but ultimately it's his decision. So the hybrid plan is going to be to spreading, splitting the kids into two different cohorts, an A and a B cohort. And A cohort would go in-person classes on Monday and Tuesday, then online Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then the B cohort would go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, online, Thursday, Friday, in-person. Kindergarten is going to be a five-day program, but it's going back to the old way of kindergarten, which is the half-days. So there'll be an AM class and a PM class. Pre-K is also going to be five days a week. And the sped program, if a child needs 75% assistance, they will have the option of being in school four days a week with Wednesdays. I think it was four or five. I'm not 100% sure if it's four or five for the sped kids. And then one day in between where they would move them and clean the rooms or something like that. But all of it is going to be presented in, I'm sure, a lot more detail than what I just gave you. It was a overs, like it was a massive plan that they put together. I don't know if the plan is actually, I think it's online at the Board of Ed site. But I know they're going to go over it tomorrow in that meeting. So it is definitely a good meeting to go to if you're a parent and you have a kid in school and you're trying to figure out what's going to be happening. And then the EDC call was canceled, but I attended a meeting for advanced CT. And they had some presenters on there. I wanted to present this stuff to the EDC, but I want to get it to you guys too, in a sense, so you can kind of mull it over. They talked about a few different things that they're doing for the advanced CT programs regarding getting the towns back open and stuff. And one of the people that was on there were talking about they're trying to coordinate with the organizations to look for bulk purchasing and buying PPE and such at a bulk purchase rate, and then offering it at discounted rates to businesses. There's a lot of disperation out there regarding the small businesses and PPE. And small businesses are spending, some of them up to $1,000 a month, trying to keep up with the PPE regulations. And I was a little discouraged when the feedback was, you know, they understand that it's harder for businesses, but they're just going to have to change their business model and will probably just need to increase the rates to be able to compensate for that, which I think is hard in a time right now. But looking for opportunities to try to bulk purchase for like multiple towns and then get that discounted rate, give that to the businesses, we might be able to get it at a better rate. So that was something that I thought would be interesting for the EDC to look into. And they had a bunch of other stuff that they were looking at around key cluster areas and high-growth areas. One of the things that they talked a lot about was kind of marketing your open, your open land. I know Heidi is on and we'd had a small conversation around this site finder tool that's out there where towns can list their available properties. And that's kind of, it's used through the advanced CT area when businesses are looking to come in. Some of the key areas that they were looking at that I thought would kind of work here, they were saying, was bioscience, advanced manufacturing, financial services, insurance, software, digital, stuff like that. And I know we have some larger tracts of land here, but that was again, something that I was going to give to the EDC to look into. And the state of Connecticut just announced their business one-stop site, which I think is going to be very beneficial. It's for all new or small business owners who are looking to open their business. And it's like a one-stop site for all the different things you have to do to open your business. That was really good. And then there was some things there that I wanted to bring to the EDC and to you guys that maybe we can start thinking about. But a bunch of municipalities were on there and some of the things that they were looking at was again, a co-op to purchase PPE for their small businesses. What they were calling place-making on the green, which I brought up one of the last meetings about like the town that bought a bunch of Adirondack chairs and put like four groups of five chairs on the green to encourage people to be out and about and use the green. And working, one of the things that they had was working with our local Chamber of Commerce to kind of improve the sales of small businesses in town to come up with like a, like a incentive and market, like going to all these smaller businesses and then you turn in your receipts for these small businesses. And if you hit so many of the small businesses in town, you can win a gift card to like a local restaurant or something like that. But they just had some really good ideas that I will be presenting over to the EDC when I go there. And I kind of wanted you guys to hear about some of them too. That's about it for me. Not that that wasn't more than enough. And that gets us over to our new business. So 8-1, consideration of a resolution authorizing the issue of $3 million bonds to refund certain prior bonds of the town and to finance such additional amounts as they are needed to pay all fees, costs, expenses, and premium in connection with the refunding of the prior bonds and approving the proceeds of such bonds for the foregoing purpose and the setting of a public hearing there on August 25, 2020. And that is the longest run-on sentence I think I've ever seen.
That's funny.
With more words that are probably confusing people. Just my opinion.
Yes. So good evening, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I'm also joined tonight by Lisa Hancock, our Director of Finance, and Barry Bernaby. Is I pronounce that right, Bernaby?
Hi, Barry.
Managing Director from Phoenix Advisors. This was something that was brought to my attention from our Finance Director that ultimately we will need to do a public hearing on, but to maybe sort of set the stage a little bit. And if we have any questions for Lisa or Barry while they're here tonight, we can certainly ask them prior to the public hearing so that we're all on the same page. So what this is, this item proposes the authorization to issue up to $3 million in general obligation bonds to refund certain future maturities of prior bond issues. Basically, we're looking at a savings that, you know, Lisa and Barry will tell you a little bit about. And I guess this just is part of the way we do things. Maybe Lisa, do you want to maybe jump in and explain a little bit more about this?
Sure. And what I'll do is I'll turn a lot of it over to Barry. But Barry and I have, we're always looking at how we can structure debt or how we can create some savings for the future. And Barry and I had an analysis done with another company along with him to see where we could find some savings. And there are some older bonds that are still out there that will generate close to $200,000 in savings for the town over the remaining life. So what we're proposing to do is to refund those bonds and issue at a lower interest rate to pay them off. And it'll, as a result, will save us close to $200,000. But Barry, if you want to speak up and talk to about it in a little more detail, I'd appreciate that. And this is, Barry Bernaby is our Financial Advisor from Phoenix Advisors, and they've worked with the town for many years.
Thank you, Lisa and Michael. Both of you summarized it pretty well, I think. Interest rates are very, very low right now. The town is going to be issuing what we call new money bonds, $10,570,000 for various capital projects. So the town's going to be in the market anyways. By doing these refinancing bonds at the same time, the town's going to really mitigate its issuance costs and maximize the savings. So it would make sense to do this refinancing by itself, but the fact that the town's going out for new money bonds, we could combine the two together. And like I said, that's going to turbocharge the savings even more. So it's no new debt for the town. It's just refinancing bonds that were issued in 2010 and 2011. And we're keeping the term, the same term. We're not extending maturities. We're not restructuring bonds. All we're doing is lowering the interest cost.
Does anybody have any questions? You know I do, Lisa. Not a lot.
Kurt.
That's fine. That's why we're here.
Kurt, I'm going to give Kurt the go first. See if he can preempt me.
So I guess my first question, I said $200,000 over the life of the bonds, approximate savings. How does that work out year by year? Or some of the, it says something about the sewer project and that, if I remember correctly, is 20 years. So, but then I'm sure the other bonds that are brought in there, would they be shorter term? So would some of the savings front-loaded? I don't, you know, or would it be 20-year, average it out? So about $10,000 a year over 20 years?
No, go ahead, Barry.
No, we're not extending any maturity. We're keeping the term of the new refunding bonds the same as the term of the old bonds. And the way we have it structured right now is what we call equal savings, meaning each year saves an equal amount of savings, about $20,000 each year.
And some of that will belong to the sewer fund once we figure out what the percentages are when everything is done. So the sewer fund, which desperately needs funding sources also, this will give them a little bit of savings as well and also kind of ease the burden on our general fund expenses going forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. So if I'm reading this correctly, we're basically just refinancing the bond that we have at a lower interest rate without extending the timeline at all, right?
That is correct.
It's not going to be a massive savings, but if it's a $10,000 savings off of the debt, then that will help us. And since we're not extending it, so what is the actual payback period? Is it 10 more years? Was it a 20-year bond to begin with?
Yes, there's, there's 11, one, two, three, four, five, six. 11 years remain. So we're keeping the term the same. It's going to be 11 years. We're not shortening the term or lengthening it and keeping it the same.
Okay. And we're going to issue these the same time as we're issuing the rest of them. So we're not going to get hit with all the issuance costs or anything like that.
Exactly. That's a big factor here. So you kind of kill two birds with one stone. Actually, the town's going to be issuing what we call new money bonds.
Yep.
Refinancing bonds and actually a short-term bond anticipation note for the, for the school project.
The new money bonds, reissuance, and the bands, right?
Correct.
And the bands are for the school, correct?
Right. Is that for the, the school grant pending from the state?
It's for Birch Grove, Birch Grove School.
And Lisa, is that at the full amount or is that just our 11%? We have to issue it at the full, right?
No, what, what we're doing in this next bond issue is it's going to include a little over $5 million worth of the bonding for what our share would be for the school. But then we're also issuing, issuing about 4.5 million for the 11% that they hold back that we have to prepay and something like that. I really can't front the cash for. So we issue short-term notes. We wouldn't be able to bond that, of course. So it's like a temporary loan for the cash flow.
Okay. And my next question is just going to be, since rates are low and we're already in the midst of looking at refinancing and that, is there anything else that would be optimized right now?
Well, we, we looked at all of the town's outstanding debt. And with the, with the new tax law from 2017, it limits you to, you just can't go in what's called the advanced refund all bonds. They have to be at what we call the call date. And both the 2011, 2010 and 11 bond issues are available to be refinanced. No other issue is available to be refinanced at this point.
All right. That was my question. So, so there's nothing else that we, we can only do these two?
We look for everything.
Well, you know what? Thank you for looking. I appreciate it. $200,000 is a, it's a good win.
It's something.
Right. So I guess tonight all we're doing is setting the public hearing.
That's correct. And we, and obviously it's good that we got this on the record now tonight. So in case anybody has questions next week, we can remind them of what Barry and Lisa said.
Yep. All right. So if nobody else has any questions?
All right. Stevie Jones, I did a motion that be resolved by the Tallinn Town Council that hereby appropriates as follows. Resolution authorizing the issue of 3 million bonds to refund certain prior bonds of the town and to plan such additional amounts as are needed to pay for all fees, costs, expenses, and premium in connection with the refunding of the prior bonds and appropriating the proceeds of such bonds for the foregoing purpose and the setting of a public hearing there on, on August 25, 2020. A copy of the full text of the resolution is recorded following these 18 minutes approved by the Tallinn Town Council on August 11, 2020.
This is Brenda Felucy. I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra? Steve? Oh.
Good night, mute. No, sorry.
That's okay. All right. You and I? Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I am an aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, Barry. I appreciate it. Thank you for the work.
Excuse me for one minute, Tammy. Do you want Barry to be in attendance on August 25 in case there's any other additional questions that day for the public hearing?
Do you think you can answer any other question that might come up?
I can answer some. It would all depend on what it is. If they're looking at some of the technical analysis of the savings and stuff like that, Barry would be the better person.
Then we should have him there just in case. It's early in the meeting, so we'll get it out of the way.
Yeah, it's first thing, first thing.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that good with you, Barry?
Sure. No, no problem.
See you in a couple of weeks, Barry.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Barry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, gets us to 8-2. Town Council Review of a Homegrown Approach to Strengthen the Region: Action Plan for Economic Vitality, the Tallinn, Bolton, Coventry, Mansfield Initiative.
Great. Hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Very pleased that this is on the agenda tonight through the good work of our Planning Director, Heidi Smoker, that, you know, and I appreciate you being here tonight. This is that four-town study that's been in the works for about a year at this point. Study and plan of action to help bolster our region. And it's a plan that obviously, you know, with Bolton, Coventry, Mansfield, and Tallinn, we're all sort of geographically located near one another, similar demographics, similar reliance upon the academic institutions in this region. So definitely a good group to cross over and try to work together with to bolster our overall region. So if, just to refresh anyone's memories, about a year ago, the four towns came together and hired Advanced CT, which was formerly CIRC, to prepare a regional economic development plan. And it's been, it's been quite a year, obviously, the plan, as the report shows, it references COVID-19 and all of that. But it started off with stakeholder interviews, focus groups, a night that we had in the Coventry building where a lot of people came together and did what they would call a charrette with ideas and small table focus groups. And that's all cited in the report. The meeting was well-attended and from Tallinn, we had counselors there, other board and commission, planning and zoning members, Economic Development Commission members there, staff and local business owners. So it was very well-attended. And tonight we have the draft plan in the packet. The reason we did so is because Advanced CT is looking for any public comment on the plan by August 21, which is about 10 days from today. And then they're going to hold a meeting on September 16 to, I guess, maybe Heidi can correct me, but to sort of share the findings and perhaps get ready to release the final plan at that point. So we're getting very close to the finish line with this. And we just, I'm glad that the council wants the opportunity to talk a little bit about it while Heidi and I are here. And yeah, we're open to hearing what, what questions you might have and any ideas. The recommendations are very nicely detailed. It's, it's a lengthy report. A lot of it, a lot of good detail in the appendices, if you read through it, from, from all, basically a year's worth of work. But there are some very good takeaways from, from this.
When was that meeting again, Mike? September?
Of 2019.
No, Sept-
Oh, I'm sorry. September 16 at 7:00 PM is the remote public, it's a remote Zoom meeting that Advanced CT is doing.
At 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we receive information on that?
I don't think it's been set yet, has it, Heidi?
We'll, we'll provide information once the details are out.
Perfect. Okay, so I hope everybody had a chance to at least kind of peruse this. It is a very lengthy document, but it had a lot of good information in it. So I guess what we can do is if you have any feedback on the document or anything that you would like to, to ask or talk about, we can just have a bit of an informal conversation on it. And if we have anything that needs to go back to the committee from us, Heidi, I'm assuming you would be the one to kind of take that back?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Does anybody have any, anything they want to talk about?
Kurt raised his hand.
Kurt? Kurt?
I guess a question for Heidi real quick. I read in here about using our GIS mapping system to highlight outdoor or public space, public land, and hiking conservation areas, whatever, or it may be. Is that, I don't remember. Is that something we're doing? And if it's not, what does that, is that something, is that doable? Because I think that sounds pretty relatively easy for us to do within the house. Whatever, I'm not sure. So listen to your feedback.
Heidi Smoker, Planning Director. We have a small budget right now for in-house mapping. Because of COVID, that person hasn't been able to come in, but hopefully he will be able to soon. The Conservation Commission over the past few years had upgraded their trail maps. Right now, they still print paper maps. We're hoping our GIS person can help us be more modern in how we digitally have our trail information out there. We probably would need outside expertise to help the four towns compile it into something bigger. One of my favorite websites to show what can be done is listed in here. It's for the Eight Mile Corridor down in coastal Connecticut around the Eight Mile River. So a little bit can be done in-house, but we would probably need help to turn it into a really robust, user-friendly product.
Thank you.
And I think that is that kind of the intent, like what I was getting to on there is that it looks like a lot of this, they're saying we're going to hopefully try to combine and do at like the four-town level, right?
That's the ultimate goal, even eventually, if the funding is there, to have one joint website for all of these initiatives in this plan. But that is the intent, to have a more modern way of putting our assets out there with the four towns doing it together.
Brenda?
Yeah, one little housekeeping thing first. On page 20 of the report, there is, under the trail-based economic vitality, one of the links is members only, so we weren't able to access that. And it says it right in the link, members only.
Okay.
So, you know, I loved the idea of what you guys were talking about with the trails. Something that's unique about the four towns we chose, they're in two different tourism regions. So we have possibly the potential of whatever work we do being highlighted by each of the regions. So we can like double our impact by only doing the work once. And I saw a lot that was in this report on things that we were doing with our tourism. One of the things that we planned to do, this- One of the things that we planned to do this, uh, year, but were unable to do was inviting, um, colleges to do tours of locations. So it was inviting the, um, admission counselors and anybody that has, um, real contact with the parents and with the families when they come in to, you know, take a look at a college for tour or on admissions day, um, or the SOAR days or whatever they're called now. Um, inviting them on a tour and stopping at different locations in this, in this region. It was kind of alluded to in there. Um, but it might be something we can piggyback together. If the central region tourism does it again, we might be able to get involved in it and not have to pay for it. You know, because Dacco Bus is the one who would end up doing the tour, um, and that would save us some money. So that's something to keep an eye on and keep an eye on what the other region, uh, the eastern region is doing too. Because again, we might be able to perform some of the tasks that were outlined, um, in this report through other resources and, um, get the, you know, get it doubly done. So, um, I would like to thank you for, at the end of the report, having all the sections, um, put out by towns. I was thinking maybe we could do, I saw the Talon list and it seemed very short in descriptions and maybe we can enhance that a little bit so that anybody reading the report would have a little bit more of an idea, um, than rather the short ones we had. Um, and I also liked the last few pages that gave us basically a project outline, um, highlighting which groups would be working, um, on different tasks in timeframes. I thought that was extremely helpful. Um, and it's something that maybe we can take a look at. And, you know, we've own, in November, we would have been here a year. I always like to take a look at where our, um, where we are in our goals and see if any of our goals can be aligned, um, with some of the things that are coming up in this project. And then also, um, having each liaison bring this to whatever board or commission that's mentioned. Um, bringing it to their attention, uh, unless Mike Rosen has already done that. Um, or Heidi has already done that.
So I, I think that.
I have sent out to other boards and commissions.
Excellent. I, I, I love the report. I was geeking out on all of the tourism stuff, um, obviously. But it, there's a lot in there and I'm very excited for where we can go with this. So long as we decide we are going to, um, commit to putting the equity into it. And I know we're on two strings, uh, when it comes to budget and, um, sometimes with, um, personnel in different departments. So I'm hoping that we can find ways, um, to help invest so that we can get, um, going with this project. I'd hate to see all this work done and us not commit to following through.
Thank you. Um, so I did go through this and there's a lot of stuff on here that, Heidi, I thought most of my, um, questions or suggestions would probably be better suited to the EDC area or like there, like the whole ag tourism section was great. But, um, I, I'm wondering how we could possibly look at doing the regional ag commission like they mentioned. Um, I, I read it more through here, not to find like suggestions on what could be fixed in here because I thought it was pretty solid, but more in the relation of, um, what can we do here in town? Uh, to facilitate some of this. And it kept talking about an implementer. Um, but it didn't really define what an implementer was. So as I was getting to the bottom and the appendices and all of that stuff and, um, the how-tos and the whys and all that, I'm assuming that at some point what they're gonna be looking to do here is to go over this with all the towns. And then, um, I noticed it said that it could take like up to a year to do some of these things. Like some of it, I thought, you know, we might be able to get started on if other towns have the resource to. Uh, and it's things that we've talked about here before, for instance, like the business listing. And, um, I liked the idea of, um, oh, the, like the consolidated list of inventory assets across all four towns and stuff like that. So I, I wasn't quite sure if you had any feedback for us on how you see this moving forward and what this implementer is. Is this something that we're gonna get together and then say, you know, how do we, how do we make this work functionally for all of us? And how much does all of that cost? And is the implementer an external person that would go and do all this?
So I think the intention was that the implementer is an evolution. That for the first year, it might be that each town appoints one or two people, perhaps a staff person and one or two people from boards and commissions. And it may be in year one, that group starts to chip away at some of the low-hanging fruit and the priorities. And then depending on how the relationship works out, the intent was maybe at some point in a couple of years, there's a staff person or there's a more, um, defined group that this is their sole purpose. So in my mind, the implementer is fluid where it probably starts off like a, as a simpler, looser arrangement and then becomes more formal as we see progress on these items and find funding.
Um, if I could just add to that too, uh, I think I, I picked up from the report that I think initially, or maybe, um, maybe not, uh, right away, but maybe the first phase or so would be a steering committee, which will eventually evolve into a board of directors. So that's something that I, I would assume that that would be involved with the implementation process as well.
Um, so I like that. I like the idea of, of where they're going on this. And there were a lot of good things in here. I think if we partnered with these four towns, um, I like wine. People know that. They have the, um, the Cassidy Hill Vineyard and such. They have the wine passport. Um, and that's actually a state of Connecticut thing where you can get this little passport and go to all these different vineyards and get stamps. And at the end, you get entered into like a big drawing for a limo and all this other stuff. Um, if we could do some kind of like a passport thing for the four towns for like a food event or a truck event or, um, we were gonna have a brewery soon enough, hopefully within a year or so. We've got Cassidy Hill Vineyard, which kind of Talon, not really, but, um, you know, something like that. I, I think there was a lot of good ideas in here to try to work together to do more of like, um, like a regional fair kind of a thing. Um, we have a lot of the same offerings across all four towns. So, um, I was actually very pleasantly surprised with this report. Um, and like I said, I've got a lot of stuff that I'll probably just more supply to the EDC to see how, how they can help facilitate some of this. Um, my overall feedback is I, I think it's really good and I'm, I'm interested in what the next, uh, couple of stages would look like. Great. Um, Steve?
Alright, uh, Steve Jones. Yeah, no, I was, I was also pleasantly surprised and I, I appreciated that they're on this other report. I guess my key takeaway is a lot of it feels like establishing priorities or goals within the council, either our council or a future council, to consider investment into a five oh one C three. That's a kind of a coordinated effort of the four towns. Also, my review, it felt like an area that we needed a lot of opportunities on was, um, establishing zoning, which obviously is outside of our rig, of our purview, but zoning opportunities to create more density, which creates then a captive audience that creates more of those, um, co-joining industries for areas like outdoor recreation, education, higher education. Um, and I think the third item was mostly just more investment in our visibility of our resources and the things that we as residents of town know about. But otherwise, if you're from another town just visiting and maybe staying at the Talon Inn for Yukon visit, visit, you wouldn't know anything about the great restaurants that are available, trails and other activities. So those seem to be the primary drivers for us locally as well as regionally that I found from the report.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Heidi, do you think you have, uh, what you need from us for right now?
I do. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, uh, that gets us to eight dash three. Consideration of a resolution for a supplemental appropriation of eighteen thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars from the equity distribution from KERMA for use by the town and Board of Education. The town share would appropriate the funds in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars to the steep grant match or the capital improvement fund for environmental and other testing project account. Not reading that. The Board of Education's share in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eight dollars would be appropriated to the capital improvement fund for Birch Grove Primary Non-Grant Account.
So this is, this is the night of long item summaries, unfortunately.
It is. Like, what is this? This is like the, the paragraph new business items.
Well, um, so this is Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Uh, another, uh, item tonight that I'm pleased to report on is that we, um, the KERMA Board of Directors, KERMA, KERMA is our insurance company, Connecticut Interlocal Risk Management Association. Uh, Board of Directors declared a member distribution equity to be shared amongst all of its eligible members that are, um, part of the KERMA family in the state. Uh, for the town, for the total town, it was eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-eight, which gets separated as, um, the, as the chair said, between eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for the town, nine thousand seven hundred and eight dollars for the Board of Education's share. Um, what we need to do tonight is to, um, to basically approve the resolution to allow us to accept this money and where to place it properly within the town's line items. And the, uh, I can speak for both sides because, um, superintendent's not here tonight, but it was through superintendent speaking with the finance director. They agreed that a good place to put the Board of Education's share would be the Birch Grove, um, Primary School Non-Grant Account to cover, al- albeit not a lot of money, but whatever, every, every bit helps to cover costs that have been deemed ineligible for the Birch Grove project, for the construction project. And on the town side, um, we, we have a bit of a, a choice. And, and I know we're gonna be getting into the steep grant in our next business item, but, um, the steep grant is the Small Town Economic Assist- Assistance Program. And, uh, what, what I'd like to do, and like what I'd like the council to do, to ask them to do, is, um, to consider putting our, the town's share, um, uh, primarily to, I, I would prefer it go to the, the, uh, the steep grant match or at least the portion of it. Uh, but if for whatever reason we do not get the steep grant, which again, we're gonna go into in the next business item, I'd like it to default to the, um, to the other account as mentioned, uh, which is the Capital Improvement Fund for Environmental or Other Testing, which would be, for example, if we were to do, um, testing of crumbling foundations, uh, for municipal buildings. Um, that's an example of it, uh, uh, something like that. So, um, either, either way, the town's going to accept the money and put it somewhere. But I'd like to offer up the idea of putting it in towards the steep grant first. And then if we do not get the steep grant, to put it into that other account, to the testing account.
Does anybody have any questions? Kurt?
Thank you. Uh, Mike, and this maybe I'm jumping a gun a little bit, um, but I know you mentioned last night the Parks and Rec, uh, meeting. For steep grant, uh, would this eighty-four ninety, uh, be towards the ten thousand or in addition to the ten thousand?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, right now, we do have, uh, well, again, I, I don't mean to combine business items. We should probably take them separately, but the steep grant does have two more weeks until its application deadline. We did recently, um, get some more information even since last night on, uh, what, what we're looking to apply for this secret. Um, I think we're going to need both the eighty-four ninety and the rec boards up to ten thousand dollars to apply properly for the secret. Just to cover, just to cover the costs, all the all-in costs of, uh, the grant plus the, the town match. Um, and we'll get into the next business item, but as we had talked about at last night's, um, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting, the more the town can match, it's not a hundred percent match it, but whatever we can put towards the grant, the more likely it is we'll be granted the grant.
Okay, thank you.
So I was gonna ask, um, about the steep grant match and what it was going for. Um, but I'm assuming we're gonna get that in the next thing. So what you're saying is if we put this money towards it, it will go in addition to whatever it is you're gonna tell us about in the next item uh, for the Bone Mill Brook Culvert.
Well, that's a typo. I have a, a note that we have to edit that. It's the, it's the final sentence in that paragraph. It's, uh.
Well, we can, that's for the next one. So we can get to that in the next one, but because I wasn't sure what it was. So what we're looking to do is take this money and add it to that grant if we get it. And if not, then, uh, what are we using this, uh, what is this account in Capital Improvement Fund for Environmental and Other Testing Project?
That would be, that would be if we needed to, to run a test, to do a, a test for a sample for crumbling foundations at another municipal building. Uh, I don't know if, um, Mike Wilkinson's on the line, but, uh, if there's any other uses that we've done. I know we've definitely used it to test for that before. Uh, Mike, is there any other uses of it? Or Lisa? I think they're both muted here.
We did use some of the funding, um, for the, uh, testing of, um, salt runoff, things like that. Um, it was an insurance thing. It's kind of a confidential thing, I think. So I can't speak too much about it. Um, but we did use it towards that whole situation of running and paying for the tests for the case that we were working on. And, you know, in some case, we may need more for that in the future, but I know Mike was much more involved in that and could probably speak to it better in the future.
Do you know what the balance is in that account by chance?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what the balance is in that account by chance?
I could tell you in a few minutes. It's not a heck of a lot. Uh, one minute.
I believe that, that, that when we get this, this is a yearly thing that comes up. We, we get distributions. It, it trends in different directions right now. I believe it's a little bit lower than last year. But generally, if, uh, I don't, I don't know that we've ever tried to apply this money towards a steep grant before, but I do believe it, you generally default to this capital fund. Um, I do see, I think Mike Wilkinson has his-
Mike has his hand up, yep.
Go ahead, Mike. I don't know if you're muted over there. Uh, Mike, if you can hear us, press star six to unmute, I believe it is, star six.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, star six.
We can hear you now.
Yes.
Sorry about that. So, um, so, uh, just, just to more, uh, more information on the back. So we usually use it for something that's insurance type related. Um, uh, originally, we saved up money. There used to be a, an old house that we owned that used to be a printing company. And we used money to, uh, remediate that environmentally and then also tear down the building. So, uh, when we first started getting money from KERMA, we saved up to do that. So generally in the past, it's been things like that. Um, one year, we also gave our complete amount to the Board of Ed, so they could use it on a specific project. Um, and then since then, I think we've just been putting it into the testing, um, just in case, uh, we needed to do any more research or anything into any of the cases, uh, around town.
Thank you. Lisa, you don't have to take for it.
Okay, yeah, because I, the fund that I thought it was in, I can't find it, but I know it's out there. And, and it wasn't a lot of money. It wasn't a lot at all.
Okay, so.
Yeah, there's probably less than.
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, i- in the, in the testing fund, there's probably less than, uh, I, I don't wanna be specific, but I, I, maybe I'm guessing maybe less than twenty thousand dollars. It's not a lot of money. Um.
Perfect, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for anybody? No? Alright.
Alright, uh, I would entertain a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that hereby appropriates eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars from the equity distribution from KERMA for the use by the town in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars to the steep grant match or the Capital Improvement Fund for Environmental or Other Testing Project Account. And to the Board of Education in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eight dollars would be appropriated to the Capital Improvement Fund for Birch Grove Primary School, School Non-Grant Account, approved by the Talon Town Council on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
This is Brenda Felucy, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Kurt? Kurt, I'm mute. I'm an aye.
It, it passes. I mean, you have enough votes, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Lisa, it passes. I don't know. Kurt is bottling off here. Um, alright.
I think, I think, I think Lisa wanted, yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
I found the number if you want it.
Sure.
Seventeen, seventeen thousand three hundred- Seventeen, seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
Seventeen thousand, what was that?
Three eighty.
Three eighty.
That was pretty close.
You were. Look at that. Good numbers. Okay, um, all right, that gets us to eight dash four, consideration of a resolution to authorize Town Manager to submit a twenty-twenty steep application to Office of Policy and Management.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Uh, this item, uh, needs a little bit of a backstory, so I'll, I'll try to give it to you. Uh, so the steep grant, again, the Small Town Economic Assistance Program is a, is a grant that is put on by the State of Connecticut. Um, uh, it's not every year, but it's every couple of years. It's generally, uh, put on by the Office of Policy and Management. Uh, I believe the last time that we applied for a steep grant, it might have been the year twenty seventeen, but I can tell you Talon has applied for, uh, the steep grant many times in the past, uh, five or six. And generally, we have a good track record of, of our applications to actually being awarded the steep grant. Um, some other projects that have been funded by the steep grant are the Highway Garage, the Library Renovation and Reconstruction. Um, trying to think of, um, I'm sure Bev or some other people can help me out, but we, we've had a good track record of, of applying for steep grants and getting them. And, um, jet, usually, uh, in good times, they're in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, which is obviously a significant chunk of money. So, uh, we were excited to hear that even with COVID nineteen this year, they were going to release the steep grant. Uh, even with any sort of economic uncertainty that might be at the state level. Um, the, as working through the process, I, I organized the team of people that, uh, staff that would, um, help me put together the paperwork, uh, to fund a project of the steep grant. Um, generally, it was staff that have worked on the steep grant in the past, Lisa, Bev, um, Heidi. Uh, in this case, I also involved, uh, Public Works, D P W Scott Lappin and, and Bruce Watt from Recreation, and Mike Wilkinson as well. And we, we tried to quickly put our heads together to figure out, um, what we could apply the steep grant money for. They only, they only gave us a four, four weeks from when they released the steep grant to the deadline, which originally was August, uh, thirteenth or fourteenth, I'm sorry, this week. Um, it has since been extended two weeks to the twenty-eighth because of the recent tropical storm and power outages. So it gives us a little bit more time to work with, which we, we certainly appreciate that time, since we basically lost a week. Um, but it also gave us time to, to better flesh out the, the program that we were putting together. Uh, the other, um, curve ball we received is that this year, it's not in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. It's actually in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars. So about a quarter of, um, grants of the past. So it's obviously caused us to alter the plan that we were starting to come up with. We had to sort of quarter the project or, you know, truncate it significantly so that it would only, uh, make up about a hundred and twenty-eight to a hundred and forty thousand dollars in that range. Um, the plan that we were starting to put together though, and especially realizing that the steep grant this year preferred applications that had a component of a COVID nineteen somehow addressing COVID nineteen situation, was that we would like to do, um, and that we actually titled the plan, um, Recreation Center Improvements and COVID nineteen P P E Storage Space Needs. So it's a little bit of a mouthful, but, um, generally what that, what we, we tried to tie together a couple of things that we thought were, were, um, necessary at this, at this time. Um, so the, the Recreation Center is an asset of the town. It's been one that's been overlooked, I, I believe in the past and getting the history of it. Uh, it can certainly use, um, facelifts in many of its different parts or, uh, in the area there. Um, specifically, and I have a, a little bit of a list, I have a cheat sheet here. But what we're looking to do on the Recreation Center is to, uh, to redo the gym floor, um, to get ADA accessible openers, uh, for the front entrance. There are two of them. Uh, we're gonna, um, bring up to ADA compliance the ladies and the men's rooms, the restrooms. And, uh, the, the other curtain drains and sump hole for the gym floor. It's protection for the gym floor. And then where the, where the, uh, where, where the COVID nineteen comes into play for this is the fact that we'd like to use the storage room and bring, first of all, we'd like to do some, uh, improvements to the storage room, but get it good and ready for P P E storage due to COVID nineteen. And specifically, the P P E I'm referring to is, um, masks, gloves, blankets, um, cots, sleeping bags, face shields, gowns, uh, and et cetera, other P P E. So kind of the P P E that's currently being stored mostly within the Fire Department or the Public Safety Department. Uh, i- i- as anybody who may have been to the, uh, Public Safety Facility recently has seen, um, we've been good about getting our P P E. We're stockpiling it. We're not sure where COVID nineteen's going. Um, but what we can't have is P P E that's taking up space for fire truck bays or things like that. So we'd like to bring the P P E to a temperature-controlled environment to, to the Recreation Center. This has been worked out between the Recreation Director and the Public Safety Director. Um, get some nice storage shelves, bring those in so that things can be clearly marked. Um, expiration dates would be visible, uh, bring the lighting up to, up to date. Uh, they wanna get, uh, LED lights up there and get the lighting good and keep everything nice and temperature-controlled with A C. And, uh, I, I think that would, that would also obviously honor the fact that the grant is looking to, um, you know, bolster an asset of the community, a capital asset that, um, you know, first of all, it's good to have, uh, storage. But second of all, this could be the first in a couple of steps to start thinking about the Recreation Center as maybe a secondary shelter down the line. So what I, I'd like to maybe, um, uh, uh, turn it over a little bit. I, I see Bev Bellady's here, Heidi's here as well again. We've all been working on this together. Uh, Bev and Heidi both have experienced writing steep grants in the past. And, um, Bev, maybe, I know I touched on a few things. Is there anything you'd like to, um, add on, please?
I think you've caught, uh, most of the items. Uh, one of the things in talking to John today, and, and I've talked with Bruce as well, is that we would look at this, uh, to do a special needs shelter. And mostly that's for people that, you know, obviously have special needs or older adults, uh, in, in the gym area where we did the voting today. Um, so we're looking at a, kind of a long-term plan too of, of putting a permanent generator in and, and try to really, uh, utilize that building for many different functions while we're revising it. Um, we did get, uh, air conditioning, um, in the last couple of years with some grant funding, energy funding. So we just want to keep moving forward with some of the improvements that are necessary. Um, and once again, try to, you know, with the storms coming and this, what we've been through lately, it's taught us a big lesson of how we need to properly store some items and, and probably have an area for, um, a shelter, an additional place.
Thank you, Bev. And actually, when, when we, uh, were considering the larger grant amount at first, the five hundred thousand dollars, there are some bigger ticket items that also need attention at the Recreation Center that we will not be able to afford at this time because of the grant was quartered, but, uh, the windows need replacement and that alone is between two and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if you can believe it. And, um, flooring throughout the building, uh, flooring is, uh,
In the gym.
Stated in the gym, yeah. Well, that actually, the, the gym is, is built in. It's an eighty thousand dollar quote for that. So, but, but further flooring was looked at as well. And possibly also getting a gener-
Mike Rose.
We may have lost Mike.
Guess that generator was too much.
Generator, put him over the edge. And then, nope, is he frozen again? He looks frozen again.
We'll cross our fingers that there isn't an issue with the internet connection over where he's located.
Um, Steve, you have a question?
Uh, more of a comment, uh, just based off of Mike's about the, um, about the ADA compliance. There was some comments made by election staff and residents at the Recreation Center that the front doors do have a difficulty opening and closing. And I think it was mentioned that we brought to Bruce that the first entryway, there might need to be some kind of manual labor done to level out the entryway doors so that when it opens and closes, um, it can be more smoothly opened because for elderly individuals, um, a couple of volunteers had to go out and physically push the door open for them to even open to get to the polling place. So there are some concerns there that should definitely be addressed.
I agree. And we were, we wanted to look at the doors and we would work with the building official on that too.
Uh, hi, everybody. I'm back. I, I actually, it's interesting. I heard you all talking about me, but I couldn't, didn't get the response, so. Uh, uh, Mike's frozen. What happened? The generator's too much. Um, so, uh, anyway, sorry about that, but, um, so yes, the generator was going to be possibly part of this, but due to the, the lesser funding, that might be a future phase. Um, I, I re-entered when I heard you guys talking about the doors, so I'm glad you're, um, addressing that. Thank you. I wasn't, I really didn't have any other things to say, but when we had more money to work with, we were gonna do a bigger project. We had to, to shorten it appropriately, and I think we have a really good application, and I want to express my, first of all, um, thanks to the staff for helping me put this together in a quick way. We do have to still formally apply based on what happens tonight, if you grant me authorization to apply for the grant. And, uh, and, and also, I mean, I think it's a darn good plan that we put together, so.
And then my other comment was gonna be, um, definitely regards to the insulation, probably the windows, which is obviously a long-standing project. Um, I did notice in the, in the early hours of the polling, uh, I volunteered there for the day that, um, it was very chilly in the morning. They kept it very low and we realized throughout the day, we tried to turn up the temperatures. People weren't shivering as they were voting. But as the day grew hotter and brighter, it quickly escalated in temperature and we had to basically recorrect ourselves and drop the temperatures to people so that the ballots didn't get too, uh, humid essentially and potentially impact the ability to vote properly. So that's definitely an area for long-term, uh, uh, research and, uh, investment.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, I, I, I could be wrong, but I'm almost positive uh, that the gym floors are in the capital plan for the rec department in the next, uh, few years. Lisa?
Um, I, I'd have to double check that. I don't know if Lisa can pull it up while we're talking. Uh, that's not a bad thing though, because the steep grant does want you, part of the application process is they take a look at your books, they look at your five-year plan. They wanna see that it's an asset that the town's thought about, if possible, to see that there's commitment on the, the five-year plan for it. Uh, Lisa, is that, is that accurate, that it's on the plan?
Um, can you repeat that again, please?
The gym flooring.
Floors. I believe the gym floors were in the capital plan, um, for the rec department. I know Bruce is talking about them heaving.
Check. Um.
And, and if they are, that's.
I remember it was there at one point, but I think they did. Didn't they do some work earlier this year?
They did. I know they were doing some refinishing and stuff because they had some heaving boards.
Yep. Um, so I think that was pulled out of the plan, but let me, let me just pull it up real quickly while you guys are chatting and I'll see what I can find.
And like I said, e- e- either way, it's okay. If it's in the plan or not, they, they do like to see it in the plan, that they see that there was some commitment and thought from the town about it.
Okay, um, so if we get the grant for it, then there's money in it that can be reallocated to something else or taken out of the capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, what do you think, uh, what, Heidi, I don't know if this one is more you or Bev, um, but uh, what do you think the odds are for obtaining a grant a little further down the line to the generator? I know we've been successful in getting grants before for generators. I, we did for the Senior Center and a couple others, so, um, do we think that there might be increased odds at some point of getting a, a good-sized generator for the rec center?
I would defer to Bev on that one.
Yes, I, I think there'll be additional funding, probably coming down the pike for generators, especially considering what's going on. Um, I'd also be looking at other, uh, resources. I know John's been successful in getting that funding too. But, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Um, when you put the package together, you kind of wanna tell the story, what you wanna do with this building, what some of your phases are, and try to get that down, um, in writing as well. So, you know, whether we just go after, I mean, it's limited funds we can apply for, and once we get some more close cost analysis, um, from Scott, you know, maybe we just put in a generator switch and then we ju- try to go after funding for, um, the generator itself.
Right. Get, get a transfer switch and then from there go. So at that point too, what are the odds of a private partnership with the, um, Parker Home to see if they have a generator? Or if we get one that's big enough and split the costs with, uh, Parker Place?
That I don't know. I can't speak for them. And if, whether they can have the availability of putting any more money into the property, I don't know.
Well, do they have, do we know if they have a generator for their?
Yes, they do, um, um, at this point. But I'm, I'm not clear of, um, all the, you know, what it, what it, uh, provides in the building.
Mike, is there maybe some way we can reach out to them to talk to them at some point to see if there's an interest in, uh, uh, private public partnership there to see if their generator is either big enough or if we can supplement it or something like that to be able to share it between, um, their organization and ours?
It's, it's certainly worth a contact. Yeah, I, I would, I would reach out to them. I mean, regardless of the steep grant, that's not a bad idea either way.
Right. Okay, that's all that I have. Uh, Brenda?
Um, if I remember correctly, I thought all of the utilities were separated between the, the two sides of the building.
They were.
So. If, I don't know the feasibility of sharing a generator, um, between two separate electrical systems, um, and also the liability if something were to happen with that generator, um, who would be responsible and things like that. But again, I don't even know if it's feasible to share a generator between those two entities right now.
It's worth looking into. We can give it a shot and see, but, um, anybody have anything else? You? All right. And Steve?
Um, before, um, Mr. Vice Chair, before you, uh, start, I just wanna note a correction to the resolution. So it was, I point, I found out that there was, uh, a little bit of leftover language from the last time we applied in this resolution, so we're gonna propose an amended resolution tonight. In the paragraph, uh, the third paragraph that starts, "And furthermore", the ending of that sentence should not refer to the Bone Mill Brook Culvert. It should refer, submit an application for Recreation Center Improvements and COVID nineteen P P E Storage Space Needs.
All right, so in that case, um, for the motion, should I be reading the entire draft resolution or, uh, the language after be it resolved? And then amend the third paragraph? If you had, if you had a thought on that, if I should just go through the be it resolved section and just say, and amend?
I, I think you can, I don't know if you wanna read the whole resolution and just, when you read the resolution, you just swap out the bone mill language for the Recreation Center language.
Okay, yeah, I could do that. So I just mentioned that whereas the Office of Policy and Management making application for funding on twenty-twenty Small Town Economic Assistance Program and the town of Talon is an eligible community. And whereas the town of Talon projects consistent with the state plan of conservation and development and the town plan of conservation and development. And for the more steep funds can be used, can only be used for municipal capital projects, the town Talon will submit an application for the Talon Recreation Department in P P Storage. Uh, be resolved that Michael Rosen, Town Manager, is duly authorized to enter into and sign said application on behalf of Michael Rosen currently holds the Town Manager position and has held the office since September ninth, twenty nineteen. The Town Manager is further authorized to provide such additional execute such other documents as required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto to obtain said twenty-twenty steep grant of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars with the State of Connecticut for Recreation Center Improvements and COVID nineteen P P E Storage Needs, approved by the Talon Town Council on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
This is a long resolution, right?
I hope I wasn't on mute or not, 'cause I'm not repeating it.
One and done. That's it. Somebody like to second?
I did already.
Oh, did you?
I didn't hear. Okay.
Hear it. So, all right.
Lucy's second.
Okay. Yeah, second for the second time. Second squared, Brenda. Uh, any, uh, actually, second, I don't even know, whatever. Um, any discussion? Now, all right, all those in favor? Uh, Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra? Uh, Cassandra's on mute.
Be muted or absent.
Steve?
Uh, I?
John?
Hi.
Kurt?
I heard that is an I from Kurt.
Okay, I am an I also, so that passes. Okay, I am an I also, so that passes.
Before we move on to the next business item, I just wanted to just say two quick things. One is that we will definitely keep you up to speed about how the steep grant process is going. We're gonna submit it in two weeks when it's due, and they said the turnaround time would be somewhere in a month or so to find out if we're gonna be receiving the grant. So obviously, I'll let the council know when, and if that happens, we're very, we're expecting it, because we think it's a good application. And the other thing I wanted to say is a little bit bittersweet, for those who may or may not know, our Director of Planning and Community Development, Heidi Smoker, is unfortunately going to be leaving the town of Tolland in September 2nd for greener pastures. I think she's looking for, to do some new things with her life, and I just wanted to say thank you, Heidi, for the last year that we've worked together. You are an amazing planning director.
Yes, Heidi, you will be very, very missed. I think the Planning and Zoning Committee has run so well with you there, and all the work you've done with the POCD, and getting everything set and moving forward. I don't think we could have, I don't think we've ever had such a great planner, so I don't know what we're gonna do without you. I hope whatever it is that you're gonna go off and do is gonna bring you joy and happiness, and you will think of us fondly every now and then.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I can't believe it's been five years, time has flown by. I was, I just really enjoyed all the different projects I got to have my, got to be involved with.
Well, you know what we are every other Monday, so you know.
I can call in, so.
You are now a subject matter expert, but yeah, even this morning, I was talking to Andy about it, and he had nothing but accolades for you of the, over the several years in the transition from Linda Farmer to yourself, so I do appreciate all you've done, and your professionalism and your expertise as a liaison for so many boards, as well as your work in planning.
Thank you.
You've definitely moved Tolland forward, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Mike, you know you're gonna hear from me regularly about the steep grant, you probably have about 20 emails and ideas of things that you could have, well, what about this, what about that? Can we do this with a steep grant? I swear, you must have a steep grant handy.
Well, well, once we lock in this grant, well, that's off to the races, and then we just wait till next year and see if we can do something.
Give you more ideas.
We actually have some ideas for next year, if they're gonna release the steep grant, the timing would be great to match up with our fire study, just to put it out there, so.
Just to throw it out there, yes. Okay, so then that gets us to eight-six appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Do we have any?
I think we skipped eight-point-five.
Oh, did we?
The cemetery grant.
I'm sorry, well, okay. Consideration of a resolution to authorize town manager Michael Rosen to apply for and accept on behalf of the town of Tolland a grant from the neglected cemetery account. And that the town manager Michael Rosen is authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents necessary to obtain said grant should the town be selected for a grant award.
Yes, Mike Rosen, again, town manager, this is another grant application, quite lower dollar amount, but like I said earlier, every bit helps. This is in the amount of $2,000 to be used for repairing, there's actually a list of repairs, but to summarize it, the fencing that borders the town-owned cemeteries, as well as the repair of broken headstones in the town cemeteries. Obviously, it's not gonna provide the funding needed for all needed repairs, but it's a good starting point. We do apply for this and generally receive it every year, although Scott Lappin, the Public Works Director, tells me the grant value has gone down in years past from 3,000 to 2,500, now down to 2,000. And specifically, what we would do with the $2,000 this year would be at South Cemetery to repair some of the fences and walls, at the East Cemetery to straighten memorial stones, and also repair fences and walls, and the North Cemetery, repairing of the grounds, fences, or walls, and straightening memorial stones.
Alright, making me mess with my already messy office. Okay, Steve, you have a hand up?
Yeah, just one quick question, obviously, we're still going through some damage assessments and recovery, but was there any sustainable damage to any of the cemeteries as a result of tropical storm Isaiah?
I'll certainly find out for you, I'm trying to, nothing that I heard of, but I will definitely ask the question. I, obviously, different priorities, but I will definitely get the answer to that.
No, I was just curious, in my, in my travellings with Old Stafford Road closed, I had to pass through charter in that cemetery. Passing a couple of times, someone had mentioned that there was some damage around that cemetery, and they weren't sure if it was existing damage that would be a part of this plan, or if it was the result of the damage from the storm, and whether or not there was any potential FEMA recovery funds that could be used to restore some of those areas, so.
Well, I can, I can, I can offer this, and I know the chief isn't here tonight, but we are putting the word out to residents about any damage that you may have sustained on your personal property. So if you wanna snap pictures and let us know at the town, and I think it's tallandemand@tolland.org is the email address that the chief put out to send your pictures to. We do plan on sending those to FEMA to just get us a sense of the type of damage that our town has sustained. Not necessarily looking for a dollar reimbursement for it, but more just to keep track of damage, and this would fall into that same bucket. So if there is damage to cemeteries, that either Steve, you've snapped the pictures, or if you wanna let us know, and we'll go out, and we're gonna, I'll talk to Scott tomorrow about it. But certainly, especially if it's historic stones or something like that, that would be part of the damage assessment. Generally, all of those go to FEMA to, so that they kinda track and put dollar amounts to various things, and if it reaches a certain threshold, that's when it triggers whether there's funding, that's what the chief was explaining to me.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for Mike on this one?
Alright, so, from a new chair, I need to entertain the motion that be resolved by the Tolland Town Council that hereby authorizes town manager Michael Rosen to apply for and accept on behalf of the Tolland Town, Tolland, a grant from the neglected cemetery count, the town manager Michael Rosen is authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant should the town be selected for a grant award. Approved by the Tolland Town Council on August 11th.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
I.
Cassandra?
I.
Steve?
I.
John? Kurt?
I.
I'm an I, that passes unanimously. Now we get back to eight-point-six where I was, appointments to various municipal boards and commissions. I don't think we have any on there, do we?
Correct, we don't have any council appointments tonight, but I did wanna just, under this umbrella tonight, I wanted to mention, the vice chairman mentioned this earlier. We did have three appointments to the Conservation Commission, one regular member and two alternates. This is a town manager appointment, it's not a council appointment, so just for those that are interested, Peggy Webb was appointed a regular member, welcome back to Peggy, cuz she had served on the commission previously. And Adam Grossman is going to be an alternate member, and also Diana Schultz is going to be an alternate member. So three, well, Adam's been on boards before, and Peggy's been on boards before, but it's been a little while, and Diana is brand new, so we're excited to have all three of them.
Yeah, Adam's on EDC.
That's all I had for that.
Okay, so that gets us to nine, then, nine-dash-one, discussion and review of statute A17-15 of the Town Code, Town Green, and Fire Center Fire Training Center signed policy, holy moly, that was a big one there for me.
So for, so for this item, Mike Rosen, town manager, for this item, this is continuation of our discussion from July 28th, where we reviewed, reviewed the sign policy that we have in place, code 176-15. In your packet again is the existing code that we talked about last two weeks ago. What I did for tonight's packet is I redlined based on the feedback that we had at our last meeting. One significant change from the last meeting is, I believe it was Councilor Lucy who had said, let's check with the Fire Training Center to verify whether or not they still wanna be under this policy. And I did check with our fire chief, and actually, if you guys look in your packet on page 129 and 130, there's a side-by-side comparison of what the fire training driveway used to look like, and what it currently looks like, with a steel rail there, and as you can see, the existing doesn't really allow any space for science to go out. So, first of all, one big change to the redline version tonight is we are now taking out, we're omitting any reference to Fire Training Center. They will no longer be covered under this policy. Now, obviously, there will still be signs, if you're driving down now, you may see signs about bottled water or potable water distribution. Those signs would be there still, those are municipal signs, and they're in a different location than where we're talking about here on the, sort of the corner of the property. So we're basically saying there wouldn't be any public signage at that location any longer, it would just be the Town Green. Otherwise, what I did in this redline version was what I heard from the consensus of the councilors' last meeting. I did, there are two sections, A1 and A4, which there are two versions, two alternate wordings, and I put both of them, and to let you decide between the two, or to amend, I mean, anything's amendable. We're just, we're just talking about a draft here, but I did hear two different versions of A1 and A4, and I'd like to see where the council would like to go with those. Otherwise, everything else looked pretty according to form, and happy to hear your feedback and make any changes.
Okay, who wants to?
Can we share the screen so that if anybody is online, I don't know how many people we might have that can't see the policy? You know.
I will have to see if I can do, give me a second, I'm gonna, I'm afraid I'm gonna lose the connection here, but give me one moment, please.
I need to try to do it, Mike.
Are you on a computer? Cuz I'm on an iPad, so it's a little bit tougher.
I am, I am.
It's 127 of 145 in the packet tonight.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Five point six, twenty-seven, okay, hold on. Let me share. Can you see it?
Yes, you might wanna zoom in a little bit, or I just, I think everybody can individually zoom in on their device.
Ooh, hold on, that was crazy there, is that better?
Yes.
You see that, everybody? Okay, now my participant thing is blocked, so, okay, there we go, so.
Cassandra has her hand up.
Cassandra, you wanna start out? Go ahead.
I couldn't find my button, so are we allowed to talk about this, like, alternate, I think the alternate version of one is what we were going with. Is that, am I allowed to bring that up? And from what I remember us discussing, and what I worked on with this, I think one alternate is preferred. If you guys wanna review that and see what you think, I think that's the one we were thinking of the most.
I, I think we should take out of interest in this, but I do.
Non-commercial events, okay, yeah, 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 right.
Just non-commercial events of interest, just I guess that's kind of hard to define, so.
Yeah, I was just trying to see the difference between the two, though, cuz the first one is just announce and recognize events, and the second one does talk about, like, having non-commercial events in general.
Right, so provide a place for announcements for any town, civic, or nonprofit slash not-for-profit organizations.
That's the announcements, yeah.
And I would, Mike, this is just like the English person in me, but I would make it civic, comma, nonprofit slash not-for-profit organizations, or other non-commercial events of, of events in the town.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
First part, so that would become one, right?
Right, if that's what the council wants, yes.
Is everybody okay with that? Does anybody have any feedback?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good with it as well, thank you.
Okay, two, there's no changes. Protect public safety, I'm sure, and that it's not gonna have adverse sight on, on common traffic. Three, protect the integrity of the lawn, prohibiting signs that can cause turf damage. Four, so in four, we have the restrict sign posting privilege to governmental non, not-for-profit and nonprofit organizations. No commercial signs or political signs are allowed.
Yep, that was based on the conversation we had.
Yep, is everybody good with the ad of no commercial signs are not allowed, or then there's the?
In addition to the B, like the alternate, I mean, sorry?
The alternate is restrict sign posting privileges to town, civic, or non, I would or nonprofit slash not-for-profit organizations and non-commercial signs approved by the town. On that one myself.
You like what?
I like the alternate on that one.
I do, I just think it should also make sure ads political. I like the alternate better, but it, it should add non-commercial and non-political signs. If we're staying in that, cuz it says no commercial or nor political, and this one's non-commercial, non-political, that's just like the alternate way to say it.
Restrict signs privileges to town, civic, and not, nonprofit slash not-for-profit organizations.
And non-commercial and non-political signs, is that what I heard?
Well, instead of saying and non and non, I almost like the no commercial signs or political signs allowed.
Well, then, yeah, you would just put a period after organizations, and then add that, have that second sentence on the amended one, the alternate version one.
We can do that.
Yeah.
I see John's hand is raised, just wanna make sure it's not raised for a prior comment.
For this one.
Okay.
Thanks.
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Okay, so for number four, I'm, I'm a little hesitant about the alternate. For B, where it says non-commercial signs approved by the town, I like the language in the first version there. No commercial signs or political signs are allowed. To me, it's all more straightforward, a lot easier to understand, I think there's a lot of wiggle room when you say signs approved by the town, so I would support the first version of that.
I agree, I like the wording on the, I like what Cassandra said, I like the alternate, but a period after organizations. And then that sentence from the first one, no commercial signs or political signs allowed.
So maybe, let me repeat, let me repeat what's proposed. Restrict sign posting privileges to town, comma, civic, comic, comma, or nonprofit slash not-for-profit organizations, period. No commercial signs or political signs are allowed, period.
Yep, that's what I think.
That's good, that's good for me.
I'm in agreement as well.
Anybody else have anything about that one that? And we're taking out approved by the town, so that's good, cuz that was my, like, one that I had that I didn't like there, too. Okay, so that would be the policy purpose up top. Procedures, the first one, we're just gonna take out the Fire Training Center. Signs must be freestanding, cannot puncture the turf of the Town Green. Everybody okay? That's fine, signs may not exceed sixteen square feet, must otherwise conform to any signage regulations that may be enacted by the town commissions or boards. Organizations are restricted to placing their signs at the designated sign areas located at the south end of the green. Only one sign per organization will be allowed. I think there is a sign areas, yeah, that's right, I thought there was a plural in there because that we didn't need, but that's good. Organizations placing signs in the designated areas must register the sign with the town manager's office or another office designated by the town manager if placed at the green before placing the sign. Each sign must have waterproof label on the backside stating the name and phone number of the person within the organization who is responsible for the sign, the date of the placement, and the date of the event. Signs may be removed immediately if this information is not attached to the sign. Five, signs may be placed at either site, so we need to take out either site, cuz there's only one.
Oh, yes, correct.
The signs may be placed no more than fourteen days prior to an event, and must be removed within two days following an event. Organizations that are requesting a month-long recognition have a maximum of thirty days to post their sign. The town will remove signs placed before. The town will remove signs placed before and or remaining in the designated areas outside these time limits. And hold for the sponsoring organization for thirty days, after thirty days, the sign will become town property and may be destroyed.
And for this, for that number five, um, that new section was based on the conversation we had last time. Um, certainly open to uh any uh feedback you have on that.
Um, John?
So, Mike, I think, I think that line you put in there was a result of an amendment that I made on that. And um, it, my intent was to get some language around. Uh, organizations that have a month of recognition, it wasn't to say that. We wanna place a sign or give them the ability to place a sign for an entire month, I think that language needs to line up more with. Uh, the language right above it, if there's a s- a specific event, then there's a um, a shorter timeframe there, so I think that language needs to line up with that. Rather than saying there's um an entire month that somebody can place a sign.
Okay.
Whether it's fourteen days, like the language above that, or if it's a week, whatever it is. Um, but I, that's, that wasn't my intent to say that uh for thirty days, that organizations can place signs on the green.
Okay, so the intent was if there's a, a, a recognition of an uh, a group or an event or something. That we would want to include that as part of the fourteen days, not as. Uh, we don't wanna post the sign for thirty days, we just want to recognize a group that may have a month-long celebration with a fourteen-day sign.
Um, if, if people are in agreement with that, I, so. My intent, my intent was just to add some language around that, so there's an understanding, I didn't, I didn't specifically. Say or have the intent uh of a time, time period, we're trying to figure that right out, out right now, so I'm thinking just, if we use a little bit of language right above, that's fourteen days. And we can talk about that some more if we need to.
So, um, my thing on this one is I felt like we need to, we need to make the, um. We need to have a six, I think six, five needs to be in recognition of events. Um, because I like the fourteen days prior to the event and two days following an event. Um. But I, I feel like the recognition piece needs to be its own number, cause um it will have different days. Um, like different limits a- applied to it, um, but I, I, Steve, your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if Cassandra's was up before mine, though, I just wanted to allow them the opportunity before I spoke.
You're first, do you, do you wanna?
So I, I, I was definitely in favor at first of, of uh going towards John's idea of fourteen days. But I'm also amendable to creating a separate section six that would allow for that month long. Um, the one concern I'm having for the procedures through uh item number three. Is uh, I think it was concerns raised by residents about one sign per organization. Um, the issue of possibly having the entire green lined up potentially with signs for any particular month. And making sure that we don't cluster the green, so that it becomes visually, um, just in my opinion visually. Unappealing or potentially uh impeding, impeding the ability of say the um. Farmer's market from returning and effectively running on the town green if that were ever to happen, or for any weekend event that. Cause that use, utilize the green.
Uh, Steve, this is Mike, the only thing I was gonna say on part D, there is the right to limit the number of signs to no more than five. So that's, that's generally what we, that's the practice we do now, uh, five at any one time. Uh, perhaps we would consider special exceptions, though, like, for example. Multiple groups want, we, we, we agree with you, by the way, I don't think, we, we don't wanna make the green visually displeasing, but. There could be certain exceptions, perhaps, that could be considered.
Yeah, so otherwise, I would be fine with potentially creating a section six that uh. Designates month-long recognitions potentially as its own individual item. Um, and otherwise, all of their events could have no more than fourteen days, cause that would encompass either. Particular days or particular week uh recognitions, um, that I think were considered or discussed in communications.
Uh, Cassandra?
Can you scroll up to A again, real quick? Um. No, all the way, uh, do. How are we qualifying them again? Like, okay, so the, well, the reason I'm asking this is about the thirty-day thing, so if we have a qualifying form, we just have to have an area on there that says. That states the amount of time and that there needs to be application for thirty days with appropriate reasoning. And then we'd need to then tease out what thirty-day, this is my only problem with it, then we have to tease out what's acceptable for thirty days and what's only acceptable for two weeks. Do you know what I mean, an application, so it almost seems a lot more simple to just say everything should just be two weeks. Anyone follow me there?
Yep.
You know what I mean, like, if we're saying like, this is the policy, that it's fourteen days, but then we say, well, there's a group that might want thirty days. Well, what groups are, who's gonna decide what's thirty-day worthy and what's not thirty-day worthy?
Well, if we have like a month's week or something, like our recognition of, of something that's a week that doesn't necessarily want. Or need or, you know, should have fourteen days, kind of a thing, I see what you're saying.
I'm just saying, like, if we're going for a month, like, is that, is that only for things that are like. Breast cancer awareness month, like, so the sign should be up that whole month, or, you know what I mean, versus breast cancer awareness week, I'm not sure which is which, I'm just making a. Example that wasn't really relevant to.
Well, I think you could technically have a sign that says, you know, February is breast cancer awareness, awareness month and have it up.
We would allow that one to be up all month?
No, I mean, you have it up on a week, you could have it up for a week or two weeks and it just says that February is breast cancer awareness month. Um, I see what you're saying, I don't necessarily think it has to be thirty days either.
I was just thinking, like, in terms of duration, like, if we set what the duration is and we don't go deviate from it, it makes it a little easier, but if we want something that's longer. There has to be the appropriate wording in there for us to decide what's appropriate to be longer, you know, or not longer.
Right.
You know, you know, like, it's kind of like that freedom of speech, like, if we give too much, it can go too far, and then how do you limit what's enough and what's too much, and. I don't know, that's where I was thinking. Sorry, that was my dog.
Uh, Brenda?
Yeah, for, for my view, um, if the sign is going up that has a specific date or dates. Like the farmer's market on a Saturday or the, for multiple dates, the uh summer plays on two dates. Um, those items would have the two week because there is an end date, there, or there is a date or dates that it happens. For the thirty days, for me, it would be anything that would be a month-long recognition. Um, so like you were saying, breast cancer awareness month, um, you know, in. Twenty twenty-nine, we're going to be celebrating another uh anniversary of the talent town. Uh, or the talent constitution, I think it is, um, was, was. So, you know, that might be something we wanna do an entire month of a celebration for, um, like when we did, we had the three-hundredth anniversary. Um, for the three-hundred-and-twentieth or twenty-fifth, whatever day, we just, you know, we might wanna have an entire month. Um, sign for recognition, so for me, anything that has a date or dates. Specifically, an event that people show up for, it's the two weeks, for anything that is a recognition for like an, a, a month. Um, then I would say the thirty days is great. And we could also, we don't have to do with thirty days, so that someone might be requesting from. June fifteenth to April, to uh July fifteenth, we could pick something that is a calendar month. So it might make it a little bit easier to be able to pick the beginning date and the end date for.
See what you're saying? Um, Kurt?
Uh, yeah, I just got turned in over, I, I'm a, I actually am a fan of the uh. Idea that Councilwoman Pelosi just proposed of doing a, a recognition events could be up to a calendar month. Um, versus the two weeks, so I think that's something that I would like to see for sure on this policy going forward, so.
You want the uh recognition broken out and it to be um designated in a calendar month?
Yes, that's correct, and for everything else, two weeks, I think is appropriate.
Okay, um, does anybody else have anything?
Um, I, the only question I had, this is uh Mike Rosen, so if we do go with that, um, that idea that we do month. Uh, we will allow a month-long sign up for recognition of a month-long, um. Uh, rec, I don't know how to, what else, event or, uh, like you said, um, breast cancer awareness month, that's a good example. Uh, what if somebody comes up with some other thing, like, do we just put it up for all requesters? Or do we have to, is there a vetting process, I think that we need to discuss that.
That's a, that's a good question, um, and my concern, my only concern on, on the. Whether it's a month or a week or two weeks or whatever, is that with the limitation of five, um. Having something up for a month becomes, that means you can only have four others. Um, I'm just concerned about. Balancing the number of p- signs that you can have on the green, and if somebody else wants to put up a sign, but there's something that's being recognized for a month. Instead of a shorter time period, they can't get their sign up, kind of a thing, not that I think all of a sudden this, the green is gonna become like. Traffic jammed with signs, but, you know, I, just trying to foresee any, any which way that this could go. Um, so, can we first focus on if we break? Is everybody in agreement to break recognition out from events?
Yep, I'm good with that.
You're good with that, Brenda shaking her head, yes, Cassandra, you look like you're saying yes, um, uh, Kurt, you're okay with that? And Steve, I don't see you on my little strip anymore, cause I'm presenting.
Yep, I'm a yes on that.
All right, so let's talk about that first, that's an easy one, so I think, Mike, um, signs may be placed on. Take out either site, signs may be placed no more than fourteen days prior to an event. And must be removed within two days following the event, um. The town will remove signs placed before, after.
Yep.
Uh, and or placed before and or remaining in the designated areas outside the time limits, I think. I think that second part there should kind of be made its own too, because I'm assuming that's gonna be the same language for recognition. But the town will remove signs placed before and or remaining in the designated area outside these time limits and hold for the sponsors.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Needs to be its own section also, cause it's gonna be.
That'll be seven, it will be five, six, yep.
Okay, so then six, I think we, um, so let's kind of kick around some wording on that, um. Organizations that are requesting a month-long recognition. So I don't know that it's gonna be organizations requesting, I don't think it's going to be, um, requests for. Recognition of, um, I don't quite know how to. Requests for recognition of, um. Observances. Like, we get an email on this that kind of pointed me in the direction of like, what's, what are we gonna be able to? What are we going to use as, like you said, Mike, the standard to what we approve and what we don't approve? And like, there's national, there's days, there's weeks, there's, and I don't know if there's like a. If there is an actual, um, list, Brenda, you might know that, is there like an actual list somewhere?
Yes, there is, there's a National Day Calendar webpage, however, that's not all-inclusive. Um, so there's, there would probably be some state recognitions. And there'd also be ones from the national, um, however, i- an organization might not have. Um. You, uh, registered their recognition with this national group, so. Yeah, there, there's always exceptions to the rules, um.
So I guess that's what we kind of have to try to figure out then, because like, I could say it's, it's National Pug Day. You know.
Cause it's a day, it's one day, so. That has a specific date, so that would be up on, um, the or- the organization for the two, or an event, I would think. Cause there's a specific date, a beginning and an end date on that.
But I, I, I guess I don't wanna conflate events and recognition, cause like you said, it's a day, you know, I don't wanna say, Mike. National Pug Day is coming up, I wanna sign on the green for two weeks, because it's on August nineteenth and it's National Pug Day.
So then, so then the wording could be a max, um, a maximum of. A, for organizations requesting a recognition. For a specific duration of up to thirty days, um, and you could do day, week and month. I don't know how the wording should go, but we could do, you know, or organizers requesting. A day, week or month. Um.
Recognition.
Yeah.
Cause like Earth Day, Earth Day is one day.
Exactly.
So, I don't know if it's, but I don't wanna think, I don't, I don't think I wanna, I don't think we want organizations in there. Because an organization isn't gonna request this, somebody's gonna request.
I said organizer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the other thing is, I, I think that what we do is be careful. Not too restrictive on the language to start off with and let it roll. And then see what happens if we do get a month or a, a week or a day when we do have more than five or six signs. Being requested, and then we'll know in advance, Mike can come to us and say, okay, this is what's happening. We really do need to make something more restrictive with this, with this wording. Um, cause I, I think we wanna try to accommodate, um, and celebrate everything that's happening in town. Um, and bring, you know, highlights those things that, that are, that our residents want to celebrate and wanna recognize. So I think we try to be as accommodating as possible, and then if it starts getting, like you said, too cluttered, then we go back and visit it. And I'm sure that most residents would agree that they can find a way. Um, like if someone says, I need a month-long recognition, and we look at the calendar and we're like, oh, we're really crowded, could you possibly? You know, can we put it up at the beginning of the month and at the end of the month, you know, how can we work this out so that we can all celebrate together? And your message doesn't get lost, I, I think we can be accommodating.
I'm not ignoring you, I'm just writing for up to one calendar month, so, uh. How about something like requests for day, week or month recognition signs can be placed for up to one calendar month? Um. During the.
You, you don't have to use the up to, you can just, you just said, you know, day, week or month, this doesn't have the. Fourteen days prior and two days following an event right now, cause it's not an event, it's a specific day. Or a week or month. So you could, if you wanted to have um restrictive language, you can say that they're allowed to put up the day before the recognition. And taken down within two days of the recognition. If that makes sense.
Say that again, day before and.
Day before and two days after. Two days following the request or requested timeframe.
Request for day, week or month recognition signs. How about we say something then, and kind of to, to kind of get to that, um, must be. Must be requested, Mike, what would work for you, like, how long does somebody have to request to put a sign up before they put it up?
So they have, uh, we, we prefer that they come to us as soon as they know they wanna put the sign up. Uh, we generally, I guess, like, the current language says they have two weeks prior to their event to post the sign. You know, uh, but so that we can track and make sure there aren't too many signs on the green, we prefer to know sooner rather than later. There isn't technically a cutoff, sometimes people only, they come in not realizing there's, they could have it up fourteen days. And they only end up having it up for seven or eight, because they come a week before their event, and they say, oh, okay, let's put it up right away, so. Um, I, I would say that as long as we know, um, I, I would prefer sooner rather than later, but like. Preferably a month before the event, um, but that's, uh, I could probably do sooner than that, probably three weeks before the recognition would be okay.
This is Brenda Felusi, so right now, currently, there's no language in this uh policy that requests. Um, notification of when they want to put their sign up, there's just no, there's just language for when they're allowed to. Not when to come and request.
I think that's what I'm looking for here, is that, you know, uh, how do, how do we schedule, how do we plan? You know, is there something we should be saying about, you know, if you wanna put a sign on the green, regardless if it's for an event or a recognition? You need to give the town manager at least a week notice or something like that, so.
Yeah, that would be great, haha, because sometimes. Yeah, that would be great, because sometimes what happens is, and I'll just share this, is that we may have a very busy month and we may, we may already have five signs out on the green. And, uh, and then somebody wants to come in and put their sign up tomorrow. And we say, I'm sorry, we can't do it, there's already five signs on the green, can you wait a week or so? Uh, so i- if we knew sooner in advance, then we would be able to organize it better.
Okay, how about this? And maybe we can use some of this language up above, but, uh, requests for day, week or month recognition signs must be scheduled with the town manager's office at least a week prior to the recognition event. Um, and then I don't know if this would help too, Mike. Preference will be, if, if you have, say you get seven requests. Preference, my, my thinking is that preference should be given to events. And then we can put a rec- recognition sign up. You know, depending on if it's a one-day thing, you know, I don't know, we got one day. If it's a week, the same thing, if there's already five signs up there, you're, we're in a traffic jam. If it's a month, we can say we've got five signs for the next two weeks. You can put it up in the third week. I'm just trying to think from a scheduling perspective for you.
I, I would agree. I mean, I, I would be concerned that, uh, that if you have too many si- let's say you have three month-long signs and then you have two to three people that want to just do a day or a, a week or whatever it might be, you, you kind of teeter on that edge of, uh, five to six signs. And I'd be worried about who, who do you bump? Who gets bumped at that point? Or can you put them all up and just make an exception?
That's what I was thinking. If we put language in that preference is to be given to events. Because an event is a singular thing, you know, like if, if somebody has, like, if you had just say Tolland Day or whatever, you already had five requests and then Tolland Day comes, it's an event, not a recognition. I think we would want to give preference to event, um, over recognition.
And so then do you take down the month-long sign and bump it? I, I mean, that's.
If it's a month-long sign, I would say you take it down and when that event is over, you take down the event sign, you put the month sign back up. If it's a week or a day, then we've got more of a problem. If it's Earth Day, you know, an Earth Day sign is going up, you know, a week before May twentieth, May nineteenth, whatever it is, seventeenth, I don't remember now, but whichever day that is. Um, when it comes down, you could put back the sign that you took down if it was a month recognition thing. You're gonna have to play checkers with this, that's the thing.
It, it's just worth noting too, that generally it's the organization that places the sign, it's not a town staff person that does it, so uh, we would, the manager's office would notify the organizer of, or whoever, the person that asked for the sign permit. Hey, we need to take down your sign for a week, can you come get it and bring it back or something like that? Because it's them, it's the person that does that, the planting of the sign.
Yep. Uh, Brenda, your hands up?
No, I'm sorry, that was up from before, but I, I, I think if we go for one day up to seven dat- signs and then we're back down, you know, I, I don't see a issue with that. It's one day.
Okay, thank you. John?
Uh, I, I'm not comfortable with where we're headed right now. I think we are potentially opening ourselves up for a free-for-all. Everybody who wants to declare National Pug Day, like you said, Tammy, and, and request a sign, so, so, um, I'm thinking th- there, we, we need to do some research or see if somebody knows if there, um, a nationally recognized list of organizations that, um, the federal government recognizes that, that we can, we can take from. So we, we can avoid that, um, that, that appearance that we, anybody can just make a sign and, and put it up on the green.
I don't object to that. If we can find like a, a nationally in our, in a state-level recognized list and say, these are the recognized events that we have, if you'd like to place a sign. And then if somebody wants to request something different, they would just have to come and request it. Um, you know.
I don't like, I don't like that idea either. I would just say for a nationally recognized, I, I, I'm just trying to keep things as simple. As simple as we can, you know, because then who's gonna decide if, if, if somebody makes a request, it's on that list. You know, but I, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward if there is a, if there is a list that even exists. I think we just need to find that out.
Yeah, um, Brenda, your hands up?
Yes, tomorrow is National Julian Fridays Day. It's also National Little Child Day and National Vinyl Record Day.
Are those actual national days though, or are they just people made them up dates?
They're registered national days. Um, I, I don't know who does this, but I, I, yeah, like it's nationaldaycalendar.com and it's something that
That's not a dot.
It's a dot com, there's not a dot gov, but if you wanted to go to, I can look for you and see what we have for national days government, but again, you're also gonna have to look at state. And you might, well, our counties don't have national days.
No, if, did we find something that's official? Because like, like a dot com, like I said, anybody can dot com. You know, if we can find like a nationally recognized list, like a, a dot org or a dot gov, something.
But, uh, like my daughter, um, has an autoimmune disease. So February twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, when there is a twenty-ninth, is National Scleroderma Day. Um, it's also National Rare Disease Day. I don't think that's registered with the nas- with the government, but it is something, you know, that's very specific and near to dear to us. Just like I don't think that Breast Cancer Awareness Months is something that's re- registered with the national government. You know, I think we're putting too much rules on this. I, I would personally rather see this play out a little bit. And if it starts to be an issue, then let's revisit the policy. You know, let, let's see what people are gonna want to do. I don't think someone's gonna spend three hundred dollars to create a sign for a one-day National Pug Day. I could be wrong.
You don't know how much I love my pugs. Um, so, uh, anybody else have any, uh?
I, I think we need some help before we, uh, move on from this. I think we just need to recap what we just, uh, wh- where are we going with number six at the moment? Um, I, I think, uh, I think for our, uh, clerks sake, taking minutes, we need to know where we're going.
So this is what I had. This is what I just kind of scribbled down here. Like I said, uh, request for a day, week or month recognition sign must be scheduled with the town manager office. And preference will be given to events over recognition if there are more than, uh, five signs on the green. Then we had a, a recognition sign can be put up the day before and be taken down within two days after the recognized, um, day, week or month. I can type that if you want into the chat.
I'm okay, it's on, we're, we're being taped, so we can go back to the, this is the two-hour mark right now, so we're okay.
Okay, so that's what I had, like what I came up with, but I do agree with John in a sense that I think we need to, I don't know, I, I, I would like to see what we can find from a, uh, registered national and state actual list, so we're not having Julian Friday.
Um, I believe Lisa has her hand up, um, our clerk.
Yes, Lisa?
I just want to thank you for the recap.
You're very welcome. I, you should see, I have it all scribbled on my paper. Like lines crossed out arrows, it's bad, so I figured I would try to read it. Um, how does everybody feel about that? Kurt, how do you feel about, uh, what we came, what I just said for six? And, um, what you're feeling on the, um, national or state list?
As far as like the national and state, I, I think that's gonna be a real tall tale, the, or tall task for us to, uh, work on and figure out, you know, again, unless we can find some database, um, but again, I don't know. That, that's a whole, uh, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm torn between what to do on that, so. I, I don't really think it's gonna be a giant problem and I would err to the side of letting people, uh, do what they're encouraged or interested in doing and it's, you know, and again, if it becomes a problem, I think it's something that could be revisited. I don't know, so that's, that's where I stand on that.
I knew you were gonna say that. Um, are you good with the wording on, on the proposed for the, the recognition that I spewed out there?
Yes.
Okay, Cassandra, how are you feeling on the wording and, um, the, the, the list?
Yeah, good.
Yep, you're, so you're good with the wording and are, are you a yes for the national list or a no, just see how it goes? Uh, yes, for the national list. Okay, um, Steve?
I'm okay with the language. I lean to the second part more towards the see how it goes, um, and, and just kind of reassess at a future time how much actual investment or interest and effort is required by the town to um, plan and place these signs on the green.
Okay, uh, Brenda, I did, was not ignoring you. I saw your hand, but I just figured I'd go around the roundtable.
Yeah, I did find there is special weeks recognized by presidential proclamations. There's not much in August, um, but next week is National Guard Awareness Week or Appreciation Week, uh, National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week. Um, but there are many months that have three or four items in it for like uh, yeah, like September, there's seven national months recognitions. And again, that's only counting federal. I, I still agree with, um, what I said before, obviously. Um, letting it play out a little bit to see. Um, I, I'm okay with the wording, but I'm, I'm worried about creating more strife with the residents, um, and anxiety about not being able to recognize, um, what they feel is important. Um, so in, you know, obviously at the same time, we can remind residents that they can do a proclamation. Um, you know, so that there, there can be recognition, but, uh, I will share. Do you guys want me to share with Mike the lists that I find for federal and state?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll, I'll get them together next week because I'm leaving early tomorrow morning on vacation.
Take your time.
Sounds good.
Um, uh, John, how are you on the wording that I kind of threw out there and, um, in the, the regist- the national list or not?
I'm fine with the language. Uh, as far as the national list goes, I'd just like to do a little more research into it.
Okay.
You know, and s- see if there, if there's something out there that would make sense for us to adopt.
I get that, alright, um. Alright, so I, I'm obviously, I'm good with the wording. I, I muddled through it. Um, and I'd like to see the list, uh, but I, I'm not firm one way or the other yet on whether it's uh, uh, just what's nationally recognized or if we're having Julian Friday, so you know. Why is not Julian Friday on a Friday instead of a Wednesday? It should be on a Friday.
It, it's up to the organization that puts in the application what day they.
There is no organization for Julian Fries, Brenda, there can't be. Okay.
There absolutely is, otherwise it wouldn't be registered on the webpage.
Hug organization, have a pug day.
Ju- just to interject, I would probably say it would fall under an umbrella organization, probably some sort of potato lobbying organization, but I was gonna just kind of tie this into one of our prior conversations. Some of these national days may fall more appropriately with the four-town regional kind of tourism and economic development in terms of like if it's a national pizza day, highlighting Camille's or other restaurants in the area that serve pizza, or if it's a Friday, places that have particular types of specialty fries, so that might be an area where it falls more under lot, under less so signage, uh, appreciation and economic development and tourism, uh, attraction. Both local and, and inter-town.
So to kind of partner on that, um, in the EDC, we've been talking about the EDC creating a Facebook page. Um, and we could do stuff like that through them, because you don't want to put again, anything commercial on the town green, so it would have to be something like there.
So those, a lot of those national days, I, I, I would say just from my experience, a lot of national days tend to fall under the guise of, um, promoting a particular industry. Whether it's Chicken Wing Day or Friday or a particular food, it's usually associated with trying to spend money to support a business or an industry, so it, it falls almost more in line with economic development versus something like breast cancer awareness is more of an issue and a social and environmental and scientific issue that affects us as a community. So I guess there's some distinction between that that I take into consideration.
Oh, I'm sorry, I stopped sharing and, uh.
That's okay, I think we, we saw.
Um, actually, so town notices foresee or have anything to change in that. Oh, and then make, uh, make this part here.
That's number seven, yeah.
Yeah, town will move, or national designated areas, you'll hold them for thirty days and then they get junked. Okay, town notices. I don't think there was anything on there that's just taking it out. Change this to there. And here is the town has the right to limit the signs, had a designated site to no more than five signs a day. I think that's it. So do you have what you need to mark up the, the next go-around there, Mike? And Brenda's gonna send out the list of.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we have a good game plan. I think, um, you know, we'll put this on another old business, uh, whether it's the next meeting or two out, whatever, we, we, where we can, uh, slate it. Uh, we would do, uh, the updated wording, uh, plus cleaning up the other alternates from one and four. And then also taking a look at the national or federal or the state lists that Brenda's gonna help me with when she gets back. And we'll put that out as part of the next packet. And, uh, I was going to say, um, I guess, oh, one thing to note, I'm sorry, a little train of thought. Uh, this eventually will require a public hearing because it's part of the town codes. So when we are ready to formally alter this, we will need to set a public hearing for it.
Okay. Alright, I am just typing down what we did. And Brenda will search for national, the presidential, national recognition day. Um, alright, so that gets us down next to report to the town manager, ten.
Okay, well, nothing to report on this week. No, I'm just kidding. Alright, couple of things. Uh, let's start with the couple of, um, topping off ceremony was very nice on August sixth. I attended, um, the lieutenant governor was there, um, several state representatives and state officials, as well as local town officials and counselors were there, so board of ed members, so all around, it was very nice. The chair of the building committee, uh, spoke and, um, it was a very nice event all around. The superintendent did a great job too, and of course, all the consultants and engineers and architects, everybody did a great job. Uh, this morning I spent a couple hours working with our public safety department. And, um, the D- DPW director to tour all of the local, the, uh, stations one forty, three forty and four forty as part of our space need study that was approved in the capital plan. So we are, um, actively engaging that. Um, the consultants toured the three firehouses, looking at ADA and code compliance, uh, the crumbling foundation at station one forty. Uh, we looked at, um, space needs that the fire chief is looking into. Uh, we talked about the PPE as part of the Steve Grant earlier today. But the, the chief has a much larger need than just warehousing masks and gloves and things like that. We're talking equipment. Uh, potentially bottles of, pallets of water, MREs, things like that. So larger than what's gonna be going over into the recreation center. Um, also, uh, oh, uh, this coming Thursday night at seven PM is the first meeting of the Commission for People with Disabilities. That's gonna be hosted on Zoom, so it's this Thursday night. The agenda's gonna be posted tomorrow, uh, we're, we're, it's gonna be considered a special meeting. Um, because it's, they, they haven't formally organized yet, so they cannot, they don't have regular meetings yet. So for the first thirty or so days, or if they meet within the first thirty days multiple times, they will all be special meetings. Um, and then let's talk about the, the tropical storm. So I'm sure that's what people want to talk a little bit about. Uh, first of all, I mean, I, I don't know if you all have specific questions, but I do want to, uh, just give a couple of accolades here. I do want to say, it was obviously a very challenging event, the power outages, multiple days, working with every source. I want to start by, I'm a positive person, I want to start with some thank yous. First of all, thank you to the DPW. They did a crazy bang-up job. Um, DPW, Public Safety and our Fire Departments. I also want to say thank you to the building inspector who stepped up in the middle of the storm. And, uh, was checking on houses that may have had downed trees on them and things like that, just looking for safety. The volunteers who helped to give out water and MREs. And I want to thank the residents for being patient, it's, this was a tough spot for a lot of people. I've heard a lot of good stories of benevolence out there where neighbors were helping neighbors. You know, there's, those who had power were saving the food for people who didn't, and offering amenities to neighbors in need. So, uh, uh, these, this was all fantastic. I also want to just, I want to extend some thanks to the EverSource crews and contractors for expediting restoration as quickly as possible to our town. The Chief and I spoke with EverSource constantly over the past week and communicated and keeping an eye on top of the situation, it was, it was pretty much non-stop for just about a full week. We have to remember that this was a statewide problem, not just local. And for what it's worth, even if they had a slow start, they did end up coming through for the town. From what I heard from the twenty eleven storms, town was out for probably close to two weeks. And we are, as of today, up to ninety-nine, I think, point nine percent. I think there might be two homes that are still without power, which, again, they, they're working on, but we, the fact that we're within, within six days, six full days, they got power back to ninety-nine point nine percent of the town is worth noting. Obviously, there were some negatives too, but I, I'm, like I said, I'm a positive person, and I just wanted to share those bits of thanks. Obviously, this was a storm that was landed harder than expected. It, it affected our area and our region more than people anticipated. You know, I, I'm not here to get into whether or not EverSource staged properly or stuff like that. It's, all I want to say is that we were in constant contact with them, we put out regular messaging to the, to the public, we opened up the Cooling Center. I know one of the churches in town had a cooling center as well. It, we, we kept an eye constantly on the power percentage as it was dropping, don't forget, when the, Wednesday morning, it was eighty-three percent. Then it was seventy percent, then it was fifty-seven percent, then it was thirty-seven percent. Eventually made its way down to seventeen, and then in the last day, it went from seventeen to zero percent, zero point zero two, so it was a constant decrease. EverSource, you know, they're taking their licks right now out there in, in the public and probably well deserved, but for the folks that we worked with specifically, they did a good job and they did keep in communication with us, and I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mike on the Town Manager's Report? Mike, I have a couple of things from your actual report that went out. I know, I, I will miss Fran greatly, she is a warm and wonderful soul, I wish her the best on her next adventure. And if you could please extend the welcome from the Town Council for James and Christopher, the two new hires, I would appreciate that. I was wondering, there's been a lot of talk lately with the reopening of the schools and the regulations around the temperature and the air processing and everything in the school buildings. I'm wondering if we have any idea how that's going to affect our energy usage and our USF fund? I know we have contracts with USF, and I know Dr. Welllett mentioned that he's gonna drop the temperature from like seventy-eight to seventy degrees in the school all year round, and they're gonna be doing a lot more air transfer stuff, so I don't know what that's gonna do to our energy usage, if that's gonna be a problem for the contract.
I believe the Finance Director, we, we spoke a little bit about this, just last, we heard about this last week, the idea. I think for that, we, we do anticipate there's gonna be a little bit, well, Lisa, I don't want to speak for you, but there, there is an impact.
Do we know if it's gonna be a negative impact or positive, it's gonna be a negative impact, right?
Well, at this point, we, we don't know for sure, because there's some other initiatives that are being put in place to create some other savings for the Board of Education with some energy efficient lighting stuff that they're doing, so the impact on the fund may not be as bad. Certainly, there were some savings this year that helped the fund. And I, I think we're just gonna have to wait and see, regarding the contract, yes, those changes will have to be put into place with Honeywell to, you know, keep them advised of what's changing in the initial contract. And we're at a point now where we're probably not going to be getting reimbursed for much more from Honeywell. And we're, we're almost at the breaking point there, so time is gonna tell, that, that's about all we can say at this point.
Okay, that, so let's just keep an eye on that, if you can just keep us, I'd appreciate that. Mike, that new police accountability bill that passed has some requirements in there for animal control officers, have you reviewed it to see what's gonna be applicable to Tina here?
I'd have to talk to the Chief about that, since that falls under our Public Safety Department, I, I'll make a note of that.
Okay. And I noticed that we're going to be working with the contractor to update the five-year, the new five-year road project plan, do you know when we'll have that available for us and for the public?
Public Works didn't specifically give me one second here, I'm gonna see. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, I, I would probably need to check the Public Works on that, just to see where we're at with that, in terms of timeline.
Okay. That's all I have for the Town Managers' Report. That gets us to eleven, adoption of minutes.
Alright, ma'am Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as laid out in eleven point one and eleven point two.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda? Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
I'm an aye, that passes unanimously. Great, correspondence to Council, Brenda. You're muted, Brenda.
We received three correspondence that were not ads. We had one for a formal request for signs and markers at a crosswalk that's on the green. We received one email about the condition of Crandall Pond, they don't feel that the condition is favorable. And we received one email with a number of questions about our signage on the green. About what we specifically just covered.
Perfect, thank you very much. Gets us to Chair Report. So having a heck of a doozy of a year for twenty twenty, aren't we? So I wanted to do a quick debrief, and, you know, I hate to, to pile on to everything else, but I'd like to thank Chief Littell and his staff for all they did during the storm, especially Betsy and Kelly working on the weekends to make sure everything was taken care of, I'd also like to thank Paul Russell and the DPW staff for everything that they did to get the roads cleared as fast as possible. I think we should take pride in the fact that we were ahead of EverSource. We had already done everything that we could have done before the first ever truck, EverSource truck rolled into town. So our DPW really cleaned house, they went through, took care of every tree that they could have before we even got the EverSource, EverSource crews in here to start dealing with the, the ones with wires and that, so I just want to thank them for the work that they put in there. You know, we were ready, waiting and set up to go to get our residents back online when they got here, so it made the process work better. And I want to thank Mike and his staff for keeping us informed and for getting information out as quickly as possible to keep the residents up to date. I think some things that we can review now, debris can be collected at the Baxter Street location through Saturday at four PM. MREs and water, which were sent from the National Guard, were distributed to families in need. Potable and non-potable water was provided on a twenty-four hour basis. We talked to EverSource multiple times a day to be sure we understood when they were going to have crews in town and which crews they were gonna have in town, and we relayed to them our lists of closures and impacted roads on a multiple time a day schedule. For homes that were impacted with damage, we worked with the Red Cross to be sure they had somewhere safe to stay and that they were taken care of with food and water with MREs and all that stuff. We reached out to cell phone providers to get our towers back up and running as quickly as possible. Communications were sent out multiple times a day to the residents. So those are all things that I think we just really did a good job of. Where I think we struggled was providing showers to residents, we were working with the Eastern Highland Health District to be able to do this, but with the restrictions of COVID, it was totally impeding us. So people were asking us for it, but the restrictions with COVID were so tight that we were trying, we're having a hard time trying to figure out how we could even supply something like that. And to be honest with you, I feel like we were extremely lucky that we did not have to implement the shelter, because I think the COVID regulations with that would have been even more strenuous than the ones that were from the shower, so I don't know how we plan for a, for a, a emergency with an emergency, but I think we kind of struggled with that one there. And I think having one clear concise plan for people to report downed trees or damage between when we started, we were utilizing nine-one-one, social media, emails, and then we got that Talon EMD email address, which I think ended up being the best way to get information to the Public Safety and crew, so maybe there's some lessons learned in there. I did have chair hours and I did actually have people that showed up. I didn't expect anybody to show up because of the power issue, but I did have people, and I just wanted to say thank you to those who did. They expressed my, my gratitude for that. I'm always here to listen, even if it's on my cellphone, walking around my yard, raising my phone up to get better reception and touching the fence to try to make sure everything is working. So I appreciate you spending your time with me, and I appreciate you talking to let me know what you need and how we could help you better. Tomorrow is a Board of Ed meeting with a pretty full agenda, the reopening of the schools, so if anybody who's out there in the land listening, if you can make it to that meeting, that would be a good one to go to, and I am excited, Mike, to get that information on the the Thursday meeting for the Commission on Disabilities, on people with disabilities, I would like to go to that one. That's all that I have, do we have any communications and petitions from councilpersons at this point? Kurt, you're gonna do it?
It seems like everyone's a big fan of EverSource, I, I did not, was not pleased with their response, particularly having multiple days of road closures, and I completely understand why we can't, no one here in the town can touch a power line until, without a line crew, for safety reasons, I completely understand and respect that, but so I'm just making a petition, I'd like to see a discussion between town staff and the Council where ideas and proposals are presented to help mitigate future power outages and road closures in the town.
Okay, you gotta slow down, discussion between town staff and ideas and proposals.
I can send this to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's painfully clear that CT's Public Utility Regulatory Authority and EverSource have dropped the ball and left Talon and many other towns at the mercy of severe weather. I do not want Talon to be a victim waiting for line crews from Iowa to arrive and restore power and clear roads. I am asking Mr. Rosen to gather proposals from department heads about how Talon can take preemptive approaches to tree maintenance, I'm asking, I'm also asking Chairwoman Nuccio to add a discussion with department heads so we can better head off issues and not be left at the mercy of EverSource, sometime in the upcoming months would be great. I don't have any answer, I don't have the answers to what can be done. Is it more money for tree cutting, more better equipment? Outside contractors, or simply holding EverSource accountable for their tree maintenance program? I'm not sure what is to be done, all I know is something must be done. I know for myself and the other councilors who distributed food and water last Friday at the Fire Training Center, we owe it to the residents to mitigate power outages in the future storms, so we can prevent more residents from being victims. I think a robust discussion with staff in the Council is needed to help the town in the long run, so, thank you.
Thank you, please send that to me. Steve?
Alright, yeah, Steve Jones, so again, I, I kind of want to echo some of Kurt Schenner's comments about some of the issues of coordination and communication that we had with EverSource. It was an item, I believe, that was brought up during the goal-setting session. Potentially an item either for this year or for a future year budgetary consideration is the application of C Click Fix, which was originally a Connecticut-based application that I think has been bought out. But it provides real-time opportunities for residents to report downed wires, anything from potholes to power line issues. I think that might be an effective tool for our community to partner with, so for future storms, since the hurricane season ends until October, that we would have that opportunity to utilize that tool in the near future or in future years to provide an official avenue for residents to send issues to that would then make their way to the Town Public Works or the Town Manager's Office, because I think that was one area of concern that a lot of Public Safety, EverSource and the public had, was that a lot of problems came up through social media, and that's not the best official avenue for information or effective information dissemination, so I'd like to consider reevaluating C Click Fix as a tool for either investment or a future budgetary consideration. In addition, I do want to give kudos to all of our volunteers for the Recreation Center and the Senior Center for the election today, the primary. Everything seemed to run pretty well, I know they're still probably working on some absentee ballots due to executive orders, but you know, they, they've gone above and beyond, and the level of cleaning and care to residents and especially new voters that had to be put in last minute or having the opportunity to vote was very excellent from my experience. And then the final note is just for any residents utilizing our trails in light of COVID and just general outdoor engagement, reach out to Planning and Development and the Conservation Commission for any downed trees so that the Corps can help clean that up and make our trails and parks safe for resident usage.
Okey dokey. Alright, that gets us to public participation on any subject in the jurisdiction.
I, I see heads or hand raised, sorry.
Late hand raised, Brenda.
Let me find this. Just to let you know, we had thirty-two point thirty-nine percent turnout today for voting. And almost seventy percent of the votes casted in Talon today were absentee, in case anybody's wondering. I don't have the specific numbers, but I have those percentages to share.
Cool, thank you. Alright, then now we get to public participation, any, any topic within jurisdiction of the Town Council with a three-minute limit, if you're on a device, you click Participation, Participants, you can click your blue hand. If you are on a phone, it is star nine, please state your name and address, when I call on you. I'm not seeing anybody. Alright, that takes me to you, Steve.
Alright, I entertain a motion, Chairwoman Nuccio, to adjourn at nine thirty PM.
Brenda Felucia, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra? Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, that's unanimous, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.